Good morning, everybody. I'm Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. Welcome to the 2018-2019 Beach Management Committee. Want to thank everybody for their commitment to this committee and go over a few things before we get started. So, we've had a call to order. We have a proper quorum here. This time, is there any public comments on India, any agenda items? See, no public comments, we'll move on. All right, Beach Management Committee. Our charge is to consider, vet out, bring forth ways for Walton County to manage the beach. And so, the typical items that we deal with, of course, are beach renourishment, plans for restoring a beach after a, an event. An event could be of nature-based, or it could be man-made based. We deal with beach vendor rules and regulations, any of the codes associated with Chapter 22 and Chapter 23, and Land Development Code, Chapter 5.10.00, which is Wildlife Lighting Code. And so, as members, I would expect everybody to read those codes and know those codes so that you can talk about them effectively, understand, you know, why the code exists, how beach code enforcement enforces the code, and if you, of course, that should lead into, you know, a understanding of if there needs to be a revision, or you think there could be a revision, that would ultimately lead to the, what I call, the elusive harmony on the beach. So, that's what we strive for with Beach Operations. Beach Management Committee is an advisory committee to the Tourist Development Council, and so, we, as a department, like for this committee to help us with, you know, how to make good recommendations to the TDC, who then advises the Board of County Commissioners. So, Advisory Council is an important term. Our vote is important, but it is a recommendation. And so, as we go through different issues this year, our, our vote will move forward with either an approval or a disapproval. And either one of those carry weight, okay, as they move forward into the next, next advisory level, or into the final decision level. So, this committee meets every other month, the first Tuesday of the month at 9:00 a.m. There is some scheduled changes to get around holidays. There's a list of the, of the meetings for 2018 in here. 2019 will be very similar. So, learn those, understand those, and so you can make sure that you have, you know, range to be here on time, or, and on the proper date. All right, moving on to the next is our, the application that you filled out. I just want to go over the mission. I've talked about it briefly, but I just want to talk about it, I want to read it verbatim. Walton County Tourist Development Council's Beach Management Advisory Committee will provide guidance and feedback related to the management of the beach areas with the aim of ensuring that South Walton beaches meet a uniform, high-quality standard. The committee will assist the TDC in establishing effective practices for beach management, beach cleanup, beach rated code, and storm preparation. That's what I just said a minute ago. That's the official version of it. The committee is, has seven members, and the members, some of them come from particular seats or industry. So, one is a Walton County Tourist Development Council member, that is Brian Christensen. The other one is a South Walton Turtle Watch representative, that is Matt McGarrett, who has not made it today. The next one is a professional from a background of construction engineering, planning, or a similar field, John Henderson, is a civil engineer in our community. The next one is a Florida Department of Environmental Protection representative, that would be Matt Allen with, he's the manager of the Greaton Beach and Deer Lake State Parks. He's not made it today. The last seat member from industry or associations is South Walton Fire District, that's David Vaughn. He's the lifeguard, life safety, beach life safety manager. And then, we have two at-large seats. One of them is Philip Poundstone. Philip is a local beach vendor. And Danny Margiano, and Danny is a local Realtor. So, that makes up our committee. We've reduced our number from nine to seven, part because we had sometimes last year established a quorum. We felt it'd be easier if we had seven members, and so that's why we cut two of the at-large members. To your term, we will later in the meeting elect a chair and vice chair, so y'all be thinking about who would like to take on those duties. And my job is liaison, so after this meeting, the meeting will be started by our chair and conducted by our chair. We work under Robert's Rules of Orders, and we like, we do that to keep the meeting formal. However, I do like to be what I call slightly to the informal side so that we can have good conversation amongst ourselves and from members of our gallery, or general public that come to our meetings who would like to provide input. However, at any time, you know, the chairman does have control of the meeting under Robert's Rules of Orders. If you're not familiar with how that works, I encourage you to read up on the basic, you know, rules and guidelines of that so that you can understand and conduct yourself accordingly as a member of this committee. Let's see. Talked about meetings, a quorum is four members. All right, everything else, we've been through termination and resignation of members. So, all committee members and the companies, organizations that represent should remain in good standing with the Walton TDC, Walton County TDC, in order to maintain their seat on the committee. Let's see, it's important for all potential committee members to understand that they, in their respective place of employment, would be willing and able to make the necessary time commitment, contribute the job-related skills that would be necessary to carry out your responsibility. I'm assuming that everybody has conversed with their managers, owners, whatever, and have gained that attendance. A committee member will be notified in writing after failing to attend two consecutive meetings and is subject to termination after failing to attend three consecutive meetings. Upon receipt of notification to the Walton County TDC of a member's inability to attend required meetings due to unforeseen or unusual circumstances, said circumstances will be reviewed by the committee members. Termination of said members will then be at the discretion of and subject to a vote of the existing committee members. Should a committee member wish to vacate their seat as a member of the Beach Management Advisory Committee for any reason, said member will forward letter of resignation to the Walton County TDC advising the same. Should a resignation committee member recur, the executive director will then solicit application from industry and our community to fill the vacated seat. So, if you, like I said, we have six meetings through the year. They're on a scheduled date already. If, for whatever reason, you can't make it, you know, let me know as soon as you can. You know, it says we'll review it. As long as there's good reason, I got no, no grief over it. You know, try not to call us the day before because we do expect you to be here, and if we don't have a quorum, then the other people that did commit the time to it, they don't, their, their time is useless that day. So, respect your other committee members. Try to make it every meeting. If you can't, let me know. Two weeks before the meeting, we'll send out a notice of the meeting and a request for any new business items you would like to discuss. It can be new business, or it can just be FYI-type of information. You know, suppose there's a group that has contacted you that would just like to come to present who they are and what they do, so that in the future, that they might want to present some business for consideration. That's what I call a FYI. So, if you're contacted, at any time in between the meetings, you can send that to Stacy. Stacy's, or, M Finger's our, she's our administrative clerk at Beach Operations. She helps me with all the stuff I do, and she is the secretary for this committee. So, you can send it to her, Stacy@visitsouthwalton.com. Definitely, two weeks out, she'll request any new items. One week out, the agenda will come to you with all of the related documents, and after that, we don't typically add stuff to the agenda so that nothing is a surprise to anybody. Okay? Obviously, we'll get new business, or we'll get requests for new business at a, at a meeting by public comment. Normally, we'll just hear what the person has to say and ask them to bring it back to us at the next committee meeting so that we all have time. In other words, I wouldn't expect anybody to vote on an issue that they just heard about that morning. Okay? All right, in your package, you have a committee member's code of conduct. I hope everybody's had a chance to read that. Everybody had a chance to read that?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions about it? Should I go through it by verbatim, or do we, everybody understands it and is ready to send me a signed copy of it?
Good.
Good.
Good, here.
Good, all right. Danny, got a question?
No.
No? Okay. All right, good. I appreciate it. If y'all could all just get that to Stacy here in the near future, definitely for the next meeting. And I appreciate everybody's understanding of that. Next is Heather Christman. Heather is with the Walton County Legal Department, and she's going to give us a overview of sunshine law and public records. So, everybody give Heather a big welcome.
Hello. Brief overview. I'm Heather Christman, and thanks to meet all of y'all today, if I haven't already.
Good morning, bud.
All right. Okay, I'm going to keep this, this as brief as possible, and I think a few of y'all have probably already heard this. I'm going to go over three items today. I'm going to go over open government sunshine law, and go over public records, and also, it's not on the little presentation packet, but also a little bit of ethics guidelines as well. I've got a PowerPoint, and I might not really stick with this. I didn't create this, but we'll kind of use it as a guide. Sunshine law first, and just to give you a little bit of background, if you're not otherwise aware, the sunshine law in open government, the reason for it, sunshine law is so that members of the public are able to have an understanding of how local governments come to the decisions that they come to. So, rather than just getting a law or legislation, you know what the discussions were, what the thought processes were. So, not only does the open government requirements apply to the Board of County Commissioners, Planning Commission, it also applies to the advisory bodies that are part of that decision-making process, or providing the recommendations to those bodies that make the ultimate decisions. So, you guys are stuck with the same requirements. So, let's see. Sunshine law is going to apply to any discussions that take place between two or more of the members of the same body, and for y'all's purposes, this committee right here, look around, get to know each other's faces. The only time that you guys are able to legally discuss items that will foreseeably come before this committee for government purposes are during these meetings. And when, during these meetings, at, if they start at 9:00, if you get here at 8:55 a.m. and everybody's sitting up the dais, you gotta wait till it's 9:00, and the meeting's called to order, because otherwise, it's considered it's, it's not taking place in sunshine. So, the important thing to consider is, is with the sunshine law, this, this not only applies to items that, that you know are coming in front of you, you just gotta keep in mind that these are, these are issues that are foreseeable. So, even though it's not on the agenda for the next meeting or the meeting after, if it's something that's related, if you think arguably it's related to your position as a member of this committee, just refrain from discussing it with any of your other committee members unless it's during, during one of these meetings. You are able to, let's go through, you are able to have discussions with any other non-committee member, any staff member. What you want to be careful of, though, is not using a non-committee member for the purposes of being a liaison to other committee members. So, you know, if you're talking to somebody, it's not for the purpose of polling the other, your other board members to, to see what their thoughts are on a particular matter. Sunshine law has three basic requirements, and these are requirements that the TDC or the county is going to take care of, so you, you probably won't have to worry about these, but the meetings, your meetings have to be noticed, and we'll take care of that for you. They have to be open to the public, and then minutes must be taken as well. So, these are just so you know that when you come to these meetings, we're taking care of all, all of these requirements. Does anybody have any questions about sunshine law? I mean, it's pretty basic. If, if you're not in a meeting, just, don't talk about it with, with each other. Any questions? Okay. We do have a couple of, just, just FYI, there are some penalties built into the statute for violations of the sunshine law, and knowing violation, non-criminal infraction, $500 fine, knowing violation, second degree misdemeanor. So, there are some teeth to it. The legislature feels pretty strongly about this. All right. So, we'll jump into then, public records. And this, this, public records is something that hopefully won't really touch you guys too much, but you do need to be aware of it because you are governed by it as well. In Florida, you know, consistent with the open, open government, it's also public records. So, it, public records are defined, loosely defined, as any document. It doesn't matter if it's written, if it's a text message, it doesn't matter what the format is, but any document that is about government business that is used to perpetuate, communicate, or formalize knowledge. So, if you are to receive an email from a member of the community regarding your duties up here, that would be a public record, and my understanding is, is your personal emails or what you have listed. You know, I don't know if y'all get, will get any, but if you do get any emails from members of the public that are regarding your business here, what you need to do is, is immediately forward that to Stacy, so that way, the county will have a copy of it. If, if we get a public records request for, you know, say, Philip, any and all email or text message or correspondence, you know, related to TDC business, then we would have to contact you and say, hey, we need anything responsive to this. So, it doesn't mean if it's your private email that we need all your personal emails, but we'd need you to call through and just make sure that you send us whatever is, is responsive to that request. But, as you get them, if you're forwarding them to Stacy, then you, you should have, you know, it's not really a big deal. So, I don't know the extent of communications that you will have. You may have none, you may have a handful, you may have dozens, I don't know. But just try to keep that in mind. If you get something, just get it over to us, and we'll have a record of it. Let's see, okay, so just, yeah, the, the actual definition is the, all documents, papers, letters, maps, books, tapes, photographs, films, sound recording, data processing software, or other material regardless of the physical form characteristic or means of transmission made or received pursuant to law ordinance, or in connection with the transaction of official business by any agency. So, it's a very broad definition of what public records are. So, if you have any questions about that, you know, please feel free to call me at any time if there's something you're not sure, if some document that somebody may have given you, if it's a public record, just give me a call, and I'd be happy to go over it with you and just make sure you not be, it might not be something you need to send over to It is a violation of Florida law to destroy public records that have not met retention Members of the public have the right to inspect or copy public records. And the statute that deals with this is Florida Statute 119, for your information, and then there are also some teeth to this statute as well. Unknowing violation is non-criminal infraction, $500 fine, and knowing violation is, oh, bear with me. First degree misdemeanor for public officers. Any questions on public records? Y'all shouldn't really, shouldn't really, you know, touch y'all too much, but, just so you're aware of it. The other thing, and this is not in the presentation, but just to go a real quick overview on ethics, and this is Florida Statute 112. The ethics guidelines are, you know, to the extent that y'all will be taking votes, you would need to abstain from voting if you are going to be voting on an item that would enter to your special private gain or loss. So, if it is a matter that is going to affect you either for the good or for the bad in any special way, that's greater, to the greater extent than it would to the general public, then you would need to abstain from the vote. And if you do need to abstain from the vote, Stacy will have a form for you to fill out the nature of, if it's a conflict, just, you know, the reason why you need to abstain from voting. And quite honestly, with what you're, with what you're discussing, I can't really think of a scenario where it would apply to, to one of you. I don't know, can you think of anything?
Beach vending might have an issue, but I think there needs to be a discussion between, you know, me, you, Philip, and then counsel to understand that, you know, what is enrichment benefit? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It wouldn't benefit everybody else. So, we can have a sidebar on that to fully understand. If it gets to a point where, if it's affecting a particular access or property that you have trouble of, we would probably expect you to recuse yourself on that, but I think if it's in a general, broad sense, it affects every vendor. But we'll, we'll get, we'll seek and get further legal counsel on that.
Cool.
I think it's a really discussion that will take more time, or not necessary in this format right here.
Well, and there's, there's a unlimited number of different situations that can come up, and in the years that I've been doing this, typically, what ends up happening is before a meeting, if a commissioner or a board member, you know, has a concern about a particular item that's coming up, you know, my advice is always, always, you know, pick up the phone, you know, call Brian, call me. If it's not something Brian can answer, you know, call me and let me know, because that's, that's what we're here for, is to make sure, you know, in advance, that if you're concerned about something, I can look into it. If it's something I don't have an answer, I can contact the Commission on Ethics and get you some really solid advice on whether it's something you need to recuse yourself. So, you know, again, it's, it's, you know, it may not ever come up, but, but, you know, I'm, I'm here to be able to help you in advance, but once you've made that vote, I can't unmake it for you. So, that's the, the extent of it. So, if you have any questions on, on ethics, just always give me a call.
Okay. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Appreciate it. Since we're going to be busy reading Florida statutes for the next couple of days, go ahead and add Florida Statute 161. That's beaches and shore preservation. It's a good read, and help you understand how things are done on the beach as far as, you know, not, not only what, what we do as Beach Operations, but also what people are allowed to do that own private property and are building and all that. So, it's, it's a good read, so quiz on it at the next meeting, moving forward. All right, so next is election of chair and vice chair, and so we'll do that under a voting process where, of course, you can self-nominate, and then if we only have one person, I would expect another member to make a motion to accept that self-nomination, and then a second, and then I'll call for a vote, vote comment, and at that point, that person will either be yade or nade, and then we'll move on to vice chair. So, we all had time to think about it, and is anybody feeling strong?
I'd like to nominate John, please.
Do we have any other nominations?
You're all right with doing it, so. You're all right doing it.
Yeah.
I'll saw second.
Okay, so we have.
Unless somebody else, Danny, would you like to?
No, thank you.
So, all right, we have a nominate, we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on the nomination of John Henderson as chair? See, none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it. John, congratulations, you're the chair for 2018 Beach Management Committee. All right, on to vice chair. Do we have anybody that is feeling the, the pull to be the vice chair?
John's usually always here, so.
Yeah, do we have?
I'll nominate him. I'll second him.
Okay, we have a nomination, we have a second?
Second.
You have a second, awesome. All right, is there any public comment on the nomination of Philip Poundstone for vice chair? See, none? All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor? All right, ayes have it. Philip, congratulations, appreciate it. At this point, I will turn the meeting over to John as our chairman, and John, as your first order of business, I'd like to get a short presentation from Matt Trammell. Matt is our coastal engineering consultant and worked with us on the HSDR project, and after that one was tabled, has been working on a, what we call a Plan B, and that would be storm response or event response. So, it's all yours, John.
Well, Matt? All right, thanks. So, Matt Trammell, I'm a senior coastal engineer with Taylor Engineering. You guys have all known me, this is for, for you, Danny, primarily. Just to recap, the last few years of beach management in Walton County, we were hired on a few years ago to help shepherd the HSDR project along. That's the Hurricane Storm Damage Reduction. It's a beach restoration project that's primarily sponsored by the Corps of Engineers. They were coming in, worked out a planning and funding agreement with the county for maintaining a certain width of beach and a certain dune elevation, a template, if you will, and the intent is to provide storm damage reduction to the upland properties. Obviously, if we have a big, healthy beach, a healthy dune, there's less properties that get damaged, less infrastructure that gets damaged, less flood claims, less FEMA claims. It's a win-win for everyone. We worked our way through the process, through the DEP permitting, the Corps of Engineers permitting. We were just about at the 11th hour, the five-yard line, so to speak, and the last step in the process was to obtain easements from the property owners. And as a part of those, or part of the DEP permitting, there was, if you are extending your property into the Gulf of Mexico beyond the existing mean-high water line, you draw what's called an erosion control line, or an ECL. That line designates the difference between private property on the upland, you know, landward of what that mean-high water line is, and then public property, seaward of, of the mean-high water line. So, anything seaward of the mean-high or below the water line now is public property, and after you do a beach project and you extend the beach 100 feet, for example, that 100 feet would remain in the public interest. So, there was some concerns there with the, with the private property, and what ultimately had happened is those concerns were echoed in the, the easements that were required from the Corps of Engineers, because they're not going to come in, bring their contractor out to the beach, construct the beach project without having construction easements in place. And that's all it was, was simply an easement to allow their construction contractor to enter the property for a very specific activity, which was to place and shape sand, plant sea oats, that sort of thing, and then be on their way. The easement response had come back, you know, paraphrasing here, I believe it was, you know, 90% of the folks that had responded were not in favor of the project, 10% were in favor. So, that left the, the county and the Corps of Engineers in, in quite a, a bad position. The commission was left with very little options aside from just to table the project. So, we saved the work that was done, you know, we have that, we have all the studies, it's, it's on the shelf, so to speak. However, the commission nor the, the Corps of Engineers was comfortable moving forward with the project that didn't have the proper public support. So, we came back to the, to the drawing board, retooled a little bit, assessed some of our options, and our recommendations were to the county, there was some public mistrust, you know, that had built, and it wasn't just the beach project, it was a number of things. But, so we had held a series of public workshops to regain that public trust, find out exactly what the beachfront property owners wanted us to do, or wanted the county to do. Was it to let them manage their own property? Was it to just do dune restoration? Was it to do passive activities such as just putting in sand fence? So, we got some good input from those folks. They were okay with pursuing a county beach restoration project, and pursuing the permits of those, but not necessarily constructing the project, with, will basically have it as a, a Plan B. That was kind of memorialized in a storm response plan that we had drafted for the county. That came out toward the, the fall of last year. We did a big public presentation here in this room. I, I believe it was pretty well-received by the public. You know, they were, they were in favor of the county pursuing a permit for beach restoration, but, you know, basically keeping that permit on the shelf, and what that allows us is, if we were to get a major storm event, another hurricane come in this summer, next summer, 10 years from now, the county has those permit authorizations in place to where they could quickly and rapidly respond, whether it be through a dune project or a beach project, what have you. But without having those authorizations in place, we're now... we're now, you know, for those of us that have been through a hurricane, you know, the weeks and months following a hurricane is quite frantic. Trying to get all of that work done in a very short period of time in an emergency situation is difficult, to say the least. So that was our idea, is let's go ahead and get the permits in place. And then maybe it's just a minor tropical event. We just need to do a little patchwork here and there. The permit would allow for that. If it was, you know, required some larger volume of sand or a larger-scale project, the permit would allow for that, too. So it's basically a permit that extends from county line to county line. It covers the entire developed portion of the beach. It did not include the state parks. And we're currently working with the TDC on getting the authorizations in place to where we can move forward with that permit. So that's, that's pretty much where we are, is, you know, we've, we've kind of won back the public support. And a part of the storm response plan and also our public outreach initiative was this board. So this board making recommendations on what we feel. Do we need to collect survey data every year? Do we need to collect survey data every two to three years? What should we do after a storm? We've outlined some recommendations for the board, for this advisory board, as well as the TDC and the BCC. And perhaps in the next couple of months, we can, you know, bring some of those recommendations forward and have some further discussions on those and see what we'd like to march forward to the TDC, what we should be doing every year, every biennially, whatever it may be. But that's, that's pretty much it. That's about five, seven years in a nutshell, so that was pretty quick. Y'all have any questions? That's what I'm here for, to answer any technical issues on the beach, any DEP rules. Brian's kind of the go-to for the county ordinances and all, and I'll be your go-to for any, any technical beach management or beach nourishment-related issues. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, moving on. Any public comments about anything? None? Okay, haven't seen none. Any comments from the board? Sure. Okay, we'll adjourn. Next meeting's May 1st. Thank you. All right.